And you're all set.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen virtual meeting, December 14th, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:01. All selectmen are present. First item of business is public comment. Let me see if I can get my participants list up. If anyone has something they'd like to share with the board, please just raise your hand. All right, I see no one. There is another public comment that will be coming up at the end of the meeting as well. First item of business is the ARPA Committee interviews. I just wanted to share with the board that Ms. Haley, I hope I'm saying that right, Haley Halli, has withdrawn her application at this time. Some work commitments came up and she's hoping to be able to serve the town at another time in another position. So Vanessa, can we please bring Ms. Hamilton over? I see she's here. Good evening, Andrea. Welcome. Are you with us? You are muted if you are.
I am sorry. You have to find the mute button on my screen here.
Awesome. Andrea, welcome. It's it's nice to meet you. I know we've emailed back and forth. So thank you for stepping forward. This is, you know, an important committee. They're going to have some great work to do. And basically, what we'd like to do is just kind of throw it to you, let you introduce yourself to the board. We'll open it up for the board for any questions. And we'll go from there.
Sure, absolutely. So my name is Andrea Hamilton. I'm a resident of Southborough. I'm actually a two-time resident. So I lived here from eighth grade through my senior year of high school at Algonquin and moved back about seven years ago with my husband and our kids to be closer to the grandparents who are still in town. And because it was such a great community to grow up. And so I'm kind of seeing it from both sides now, having been sort of a resident a while ago, and then now coming back again with a young family and seeing it from that perspective. So my background, I'm a scientist by training. I have a PhD in molecular and cellular physiology from Stanford. I've worked in a couple of different biotechs in the area, Genzyme, most recently at Citeva. They do a lot of biochemistry work. I made the decision back in October to put a pause in working for this year to kind of get my family through the COVID hump, which is becoming too hard to balance school and work and all the different pieces. So my goal right now is to sort of take this year, go back sometime in the fall next year, but it gives me some bandwidth right now, which I think is in part what you're looking for, looking at the timeline that you have for this funding, right? If it's going to impact the fiscal year 23 budget, you need suggestions by March 1. And either way, you need things to present at the May town meeting. So again, I think that's a decent fit. I've got some time right now to commit to it. Sort of if you're thinking about me and who I am and what I bring, again, as a background as a scientist, I'm very data-driven. That's kind of my, what I bring to the table. I like numbers. I like to understand, you know, trade-offs. I really like to be able to put a graph up to explain something if I can, you know, so that's, that's really the perspective I bring, right? You know, if we're talking about how much something's going to cost, I would really like to see where those numbers come from and ensure that they are real. If we're talking about value to the citizens of Southborough, you know, if we're talking about, I've seen some things around, you know, reimbursements or being able to bring down our property tax burdens, right? Like, what do those numbers actually look like? Really, you know, if we're going to make statements, let's make sure we have data behind them. I also care a lot about, you know, sort of thinking about the future of Southborough. Again, I've been a part of this community for a long time now, and thinking about, you know, I know we've recently made some changes to our bylaws to be able to have, you know, maybe a more vibrant downtown. And we think about, you know, economic impact to this community. I think we see it a lot in our increase in our property taxes, which I know are tied to some of our loss of commercial business in the town, right? So we're thinking about the future and what is our, you know, ongoing commercial base look like? I think that's a really important thing to consider, too. And of course, you know, this money's in response to an unprecedented pandemic crisis, right? So, you know, looking at if there are unmet needs currently within the community that are more acute. You know, it seems like we've done a pretty good job thinking about, you know, vaccine clinics and things like that, you know, is there currently any unmet need that we're not serving in relation to COVID itself? So that's me. That's kind of what I'm thinking. That's what got me interested in this board and what I think I'd bring to it. So I'm happy to open it up to questions.
Great, Andrea. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for stepping forward. You know, it's always exciting for us as a board when we do have new people that haven't served prior, you know, step forward to bring their valuable input. So I thank you for that. We'll open it up to Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Hi, Andrea. Nice to meet you. Thanks for stepping forward. It definitely sounds like you have a good pulse on kind of what we've been discussing as, you know, the ARPA money has become available. So I think you've done, it sounds like you've done your homework on kind of what the opportunity is. Can, do you, and you may not have one yet, but do you have kind of a philosophy that you're going into this with? Or are you kind of just like open slate? Let's see what comes before us? Or kind of where do you stand as of right now?
Yeah, so I'd like to think that I'm open to feedback, right? So I think it's important to hear what the community wants, to hear what, you know, some of the representatives in the groups that have been most impacted by COVID, you know, our Board of Health, our emergency workers, family services, things like that. But if I have to kind of think about where I, as you said, my philosophy towards it, right? So I think first and foremost, it's most, it's a cute need, right? So do we have places in the community that are currently, you know, missing something in response to the pandemic itself? Again, from what I have observed, you know, I think we have had a robust response of vaccine clinics, you know, services to folks who are going through COVID and things like that. But I'm interested in understanding, right? Like, are there ongoing acute needs that aren't met? So I think to me, sort of reading through what this money is for, that's kind of like the first and foremost piece, right? And also whether there's sort of acute economic need, right? You know, do we have concerns about tenant evictions coming up now that we could use this money towards? So stuff that's really sort of like, is there still an ongoing crisis that we can address with this money within Southborough? So that's kind of my thoughts. That's sort of thing number one. Then from there, I think it becomes, you know, are you thinking more about long-term growth in future and benefit to the town versus kind of a more immediate cash infusion? And so I've seen kind of arguments for both, kind of kicking around in, you know, myself, borough, on Facebook, things like that, right? So I know with this money, you can do something to, you can do straight cash reimbursement, right? So in theory, you could just take this money and give it back to the citizens of the town, right? Like, we could do that. I've seen arguments for doing things to lower, you know, our property tax commitments in the next couple of years. I'm less excited about that because I think when I kind of read what the mandate is, it feels a little more outside of what it's asking for. It does look like it's trying to kind of push you to think about, you know, unmet needs with the town and really focus on the future. So to me, I think it's more exciting to think about, you know, are there areas within the town that we can grow? You know, I think we've all really thought about the value of outside spaces in COVID, right? These last few years. And I know this money can be used for things like if you've, if your rec spaces are in bad shape because they got a lot more use than they were expected the last few years, right? Like, that's something you can think about fields. And I know I've seen sidewalks come up. So, right? So something like that, which really like enhances the town. And then similarly, if you're thinking about sort of longer-term economic growth opportunities, right? It does a lot that lets you, you can invest in broadband, you can invest in sewer, which I know is a very hot topic in town, especially in the downtown, right? So those are things that can kind of let us think about more of a long-term investment in our economic growth that I think in turn could potentially lower our tax burden, but is a little different than a one-time cash infusion. So again, I'm, I'm open to hearing it because I know it's something that folks feel pretty strongly about. But I guess if I had to think about it again, I'm kind of, there's that acute piece, which is tier one. And then to me, I think it's more interesting to think about kind of how do you apply this towards the future growth of Southborough? But I'm certainly also interested in hearing folks' opinion on that kind of cash infusion perspective.
Great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Haley.
Thanks, Lisa. Hi, Andrea. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. You know, I really don't have any questions to ask you. It's, it's pretty clear that you've thought an awful lot about this and you bring some interesting, an interesting background to the, to the party. So I think, I think an ARPA committee would be well-served by your participation and it sounds like you would enjoy it. So again, no questions. Just thanks for, thanks for being willing to throw your hat into the ring for this. And I think you'll, you'll, maybe fun's too strong a word, but I think you'll enjoy it.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Welcome, Andrea. Thanks for volunteering. And you've touched on the points that I had questions about. So I don't have additional questions. I would use the word entertaining maybe for the opportunity here, certainly in one way or another.
I'll take that.
Very popular. And I'm sure you get a lot of good feedback, but it does sound like you have a great background for this. And again, thanks for volunteering. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers. Mr. Dennington.
Thank you. Hi, Andrea. I don't have any questions, but I would say the word that would apply here is impactful. I think you have an opportunity to have really impactful opportunity because this is a really unique committee. And I think you've got a very, you're well-suited in terms of your background and experience to participate. So thank you very much for, for volunteering.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dennington. So Andrea, thank you. We're actually going to, we have one more interview, and then the board is going to discuss appointment. So you are certainly welcome to hang around. It would be, you know, great. Ms. Hale, can we bring over Ms. Rubenstein, please? Good evening, Anne. Welcome. You are muted if you're with us. Anne, if you're with us, you're still muted. Hello, Anne. There you are. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Can you see me? I don't see myself on the screen.
Nope, we do not see you. Let's, oh, there you are. All right. Welcome. Welcome. Very nice to meet you. Thank you for stepping forward. This is a great opportunity for the town. As we said with Andrea, if you want to just take a few minutes, introduce yourself, you know, what your interest is in serving on this committee, and then we'll open it up to the board.
Thank you. I'm totally different from Andrea. I think I might be a good compliment. We moved to Southborough about almost five years ago from Framingham, where we lived for 38 years. I was very involved there in civic affairs. When my kids were young, I was on the school things. I was on the Metro West YMCA board when they were building an extension. I served on Leadership Metro West Board for about 12 years. If you're not familiar, that's a leadership development organization for government, community, and business leaders to encourage collaboration. Professionally, I was a journalist and a communications professional. I was the Director of Public Information for the Framingham Schools for quite a few years. And that's where I think my skill set and experience will come in handy, I think. I did a lot of outreach, organizing public forums, getting translators for meetings. I don't know how much that would be needed here. We did a lot of analysis, prioritizing. I participated in a lot of strategic planning. So I have a background in that. And when I was in newspapers, I was in management. So I did a lot of similar things. I worked locally on school choice, on capital building campaigns for a new high school, that sort of thing. I don't know what else do you want to know? I'm a good listener. I'm very collaborative. I tend to trust, being a newbie in Southborough, I would rely on the expertise of department heads to recommend what they think should be needed. I don't know that I have the knowledge to say what those needs are. But I can work with others to prioritize it. I'm open to whatever else you'd like to know.
Great. And thank you very much. And I think you are absolutely right. I think you're a nice compliment to what Andrea brings. And I can tell you, we've talked a lot about public participation and how to get the word out to the public. So we may be tapping into you for other things as well. I think you're a fabulous resource. And as far as being a newbie in town, I've been here 20 years and I'll always be 21 years now, and I'll always be a newbie as well. So thank you for stepping forward. We'll open it up to the board, Mr. Haley.
Thanks, Lisa. Hi, Anne. How are you?
Hi, very well, thank you.
Also, interesting background. And since I get to go first this time, and I will not be surprised at all if the answer is no, but have you, have you taken very much of a look at the, the, the ARPA stuff that's been floated out of the media? You have? Okay.
I have. I have. Well, I ran the charge first before even applying, but I've been looking at some of the state guidelines. I don't have any, any real opinion where things should go right now, which to me, I think is an advantage because I don't have any bias. I don't think public work should get it, or the senior center should get it, or whatever. I'm open to all suggestions.
All right. Well, no, no preconceived notions is a good thing, not a bad thing. So I'm all set. And by the way, the Metro West Y turned out just fine. So.
They built an elder edition since then, so.
Oh, really? Oh, interesting. All right. So that's a nice credential to have in your back pocket. But nice meeting you and I'll pass you along to whoever's next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. Good evening, Anne, and thank you for applying. Appreciate your interest in this. I think it's a great opportunity. Just to follow on to Mr. Haley's question, have you actually followed what's going on in town government generally over the last several years, in terms of what the departments are doing and town meeting discussions, et cetera, et cetera? So you've got some context for the current activities?
Yes, particularly the downtown discussion and some of the business developments and the issues around that. I have not followed the schools very closely. I'll say that. But, you know, I read the news and follow discussion. My husband's on a few committees, so he tells me what's going on there.
That could be good news or bad news. But again, that's helpful. Thank you. And again, it seems to me that, as you suggest, a strong issue in terms of taking input from the various department heads in terms of details of things that their particular areas might need support for. But ultimately, the challenge is prioritizing and making recommendations, which it sounds like you've got a good experience for. So thank you for applying. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers. Mr. Dennington.
Hi, Anne. Again, it sounds like you have a great background. And I think you shouldn't discount, there's a real value in being relatively new to town. I'm also still relatively new to town, eight years. Do you have any, I understand, you know, you've got an open mind. But, you know, one of the things that we've been wrestling with is one of the things that you could do with the money is to just basically use it to reduce property taxes instead of actually expending it? And do you have any inclination or feelings about that issue one way or the other?
Taxes are always tough. I'd hate to take a step back in taxes myself. I would prefer to apply the money somewhere where there's a real need. I mean, it's a general relief if you apply it to taxes, but I don't know. I mean, I'm up for, I'm up to consider anything, but my first thought would be to apply to specific projects.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you very much for, for volunteering. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennington. Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Hi, Anne. Nice to meet you. I don't have any specific questions, just a comment that I think your skill set plays right into the public outreach like Lisa mentioned. And that's a big part of why we wanted to put this committee together was to get as much input as possible and have you kind of synthesize what that looks like. So I think, I think you and Andrea would, would be a great addition to the current members of this committee. So I look forward to supporting your appointment.
Great. Again, Anne, thank you so much for stepping forward. And, you know, it's, it's appreciated knowing that, you know, Barry has done some pretty amazing things for the town on the, on the committees he served on. To have you step forward as well is very much appreciated. So I thank you. At this time, the board is just going to, I think our choice is pretty easy. I think we have two good people to step forward. If the board, I'm, I'm comfortable with appointing the two that have stepped forward. I think that the skill sets are great and they offset each other well. Seems like we have kind of a consensus on that. So that being said, do we have a motion to appoint Andrea Hamilton and Anne Rubenstein to the ARPA Committee to the two resident seats term to expire 6/30/22?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Haley.
I, the one thing I will say is, on the one hand, it's disappointing that we didn't get a chance to talk to Ms. Haley because she also had a very interesting and impressive background. But she did make our decision a lot easier because we would have had to pick between, you know, two out of three very impressive backgrounds. So on the one hand, I hope she comes back and throws her hat in the ring for something else. But I think we ended up in very good shape. So it's an eye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio, hi. Congratulations and thank you. And you'll be hearing from the town soon. So again, thank you for coming, both you and Andrea. Much appreciated. All right. And Marty, I agree with your point. And it's certainly, sorry, Andrew, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just had.
No, that's okay.
Which is that for both Andrea and Anne, it might be interesting because the, the meeting that we're going to have with advisory in about an hour is very relevant, kind of some background to some of the things that the ARPA committee is going to deal with. So I don't know if Anne and Andrea have other plans, but I would encourage them to maybe watch some of the video, either in real time or recorded, could be very interesting.
Okay, great, Andrew. Thank you. So I, just to finish my thought, you know, I agree, Marty, and I think there's, there's great opportunity. And she has expressed an interest, you know, it's just commitments, we all know commitments have kind of taken over. So, all right, that being said, let's go to members report. I have nothing under chairs at this point. Members report, Sam, I believe this is you for the.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay. Who was the?
I put it on.
Okay, Andrew. Go ahead. Sorry, Andrew. I apologize.
That's okay. I'll be really brief. So some of you may recall getting an email from Marika Munzif about an EDC meeting where Gary Holmes, who is a commercial, a local commercial real estate broker, gave the EDC an overview of the challenges facing the commercial real estate market, both in Southborough and in the Metro West area generally. Sam and I attended, I, because I was driving, it began at 9:00 AM and I was driving most of the time. I only really caught the last part of it, but I thought it was a very interesting discussion. The one fact which kind of came out of that, that Marika then summarized in an email was that the commercial vacancy rate is approaching now one-third in, in Southborough, which is a really distressing number. And so there's, it's a problem where there's not a, you know, short-term solution to it. But I think it was very interesting and got you thinking. And I encourage people, if you have some free time to watch the discussion, I may go back and re-watch it again. And I don't, Sam was also there for the whole time. And I don't know if he has anything else to add about it.
Thanks, Andrew. Not really. I mean, the issue again is finding a way to motivate investment and businesses to move into town. And sewer was a very active topic here and it's something we all are aware of. And so, you know, again, it's, it's a challenge, but I continue to believe that with this infrastructure money, there's some opportunity for us to do some things. And that's certainly something I hope will be on the radar for this committee that's going to be looking at this, trying to figure out are there ways that we can do this. So interesting and good to get reinforced from sort of the front lines from people who are actually working to lease space in town and talking to businesses who are looking for space. I think that's valuable input, certainly. And I also agree with Andrew that folks ought to take a chance to look at that if they can on the YouTube recording of that meeting.
Relatively short, too. So.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Haley.
Yeah, Gary Holmes is, is, is great. I watched it as well. The, the one thing, and I know we're not supposed to get into an extended discussion for a members report, but it was pretty scary how Amazon and its ilk are taking over the world. And the idea that, that, that warehouse space is now significantly more valuable than office space or anything else. That's just, again, it's, it's the way of the world in 2021, but it was, it was kind of stark to hear it laid out the way Mr. Holmes did.
Sorry. Great. Thank you. Very much appreciated. All right. Mr. Purple, town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief. Couple of items, and Ms. Malinowski can jump in on this with me if she'd like. There is a booster clinic for the public on December 22 at the Southborough Senior Center from 1:00 to 4:00. The sign up is, is online. There is a link and everything up on the, on the website on where to go and how to get it. It is Moderna Booster at this point. I know that boosters have been hard to come by. And we've been trying to work on a, on a, on a regional basis to try to get trays of boosters, whether it be Pfizer, Moderna, to, to offer to residents and that. So my understanding is that as of last, that I knew that there were still slots available. So please, you know, make sure you go in and take advantage of this opportunity again. It's at the Southborough Senior Center, Wednesday, December 22 from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And you do need to register in advance. Did I miss something?
I was just going to add that we also have put in a 16 to 17-year-old booster clinic for this Thursday at Algonquin. So that came out after the announcement that that age group is eligible for boosters. So I just wanted to.
Okay, thank you. Again, those, you know, when the boosters first came out, you could get appointments anywhere you wanted. And now people are waiting weeks to find, to find appointments for them. So I'm glad that the Board of Health and our health department, as well as Northborough and others in our region are working to try to make these available to, to town employees as well as residents. Oh, I thought, I thought Mr. Haley had a question. Sorry, just a niche. Yeah. Just a quick update, the VHB traffic study that we had gotten the approval for for the Funding of Town Meeting, I talked with Ms. Galligan. And the traffic counts have not been done yet. They're trying to find time in which to do that, in which the weather would cooperate for a period of time. And, you know, it may end up being in the spring when this actually happens, although I'm trying to, to work with her, to work with a consultant to try to get this done quicker so that we can start getting some results and try to move this forward. Again, if the weather cooperates, then we can have that done quicker. The, the next item, we had, at a town meeting, we had passed an article for the transition from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. I'm not going to dwell on the name change, but I will say that, you know, we've tried to make, start to make the transition just to try to stay ahead of the curve. I don't see that the AG is going to not approve the change. However, there's been some comment about moving before the AG has approved. So we've kind of taken a step back, reset, and we'll wait until the AG, you know, gives their official approval. You know, the, I think that those changes and everything, and in terms of the branding and the website and everything else can be done fairly quickly. So we jumped a little bit, we've moved back, and we will hold position until the AG gives us their approval, hopefully shortly. The last item was something that just came in, I think it was last night, the, we received notice from David Emmer in Senator Eldridge's office that the governor has in fact now signed the state ARPA legislation, which included an earmark of $70,000 for the town to replace and repair the culvert underneath Northborough Road. We've taken a quick look. Karen has worked with, Ms. Galligan has worked with the engineer to get an updated estimate. Looks like the project could cost just slightly north of $100,000. This is still great news because a lot of it is going to be funded from the state. We'll know exactly how much it's going to be when this goes out to bid in the spring. But again, But again, um, this is, uh, this is good news that this funding has survived. There may be other pieces of funding in there as part of programs and available funding for, you know, for, for water or for something else in that that we'll have to apply for and go through a process. This was directly applied, uh, to Southborough. So I'd like to thank Senator Eldridge's office, his staff, um, uh, Selectman, uh, uh, Dennington for bringing this, um, you know, opportunity forward. He was the first one that had gotten reached out to, passed it through to me, worked with the Senator's staff and, and we made this, um, we made this happen and Representative Dykem also added her support. So, um, again, appreciate, you know, collaboration does work and, and this is, this is another great effort. I don't know if Andrew has anything he'd like to, to add.
So, um, well, Mark just wanted to echo your, um, thanks to, um, the Senator and his staff for advocating for Southborough. I also want to thank you, Mark, for, um, you know, our really jumping on the opportunity when it came about a couple of months ago. Thank you.
And I will just say as a, as an epilogue to all of this, um, that, uh, the Senator's staff has said, okay, so now they're looking for potential earmarks for the FY twenty-three budget process. Again, those are a little more tenuous. They have a like, greater likelihood of getting cut, um, because they're being supported by tax dollars and not, um, federal one-time money. So, um, we'll take a look at those with the Senator and also with Representative Dykem as well. Um, but again, um, wanted to end my report on a little bit of good news. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. And thank you to everyone. Obviously a great effort by all. So, uh, very good news. Good news for the taxpayers. All right. Next up, consent agenda. Um, I'm going to hold B. Are there any other holds? Any holds to A? Nope. Any holds to C? No. Okay. That being said, we have a motion to approve consent agenda item A and C as printed.
So move.
Thank you. Second? Is there a second? I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, roll call, Ms. Melonowski.
Hi.
Mr. Haley.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio, I, thank you. Um, the reason that I held on to the next item was, um, I'm sure, I don't know if everyone had an opportunity to see the email that came in just before um, our meeting that, uh, Wendy's has closed in Southborough. Unfortunately, it was abruptly done. But, um, unfortunately, um, it was a corporate decision, I guess. So when we make this motion, we just need to, uh, make sure that we exclude Wendy's from the, uh, common victor or license. Go ahead, Mr. Purple.
Uh, so thank you for noting that. Again, that was, um, and, and I'm, I'm not going to call out, uh, uh, Mrs. Hale, but I will. Um, she went to get a soda this afternoon and she came back and she said Wendy's is gone. And, and so did a little bit of researching. It, it seemed that that was the indication in their online presence. Um, and, um, Melanie in our office had reached out to the person she'd been dealing with who confirmed it, who provided the email that we sent out last minute to the board. Um, I do want to acknowledge, um, before you go ahead and approve this list, which I hope you will do, um, the efforts of, um, all the staff in the Selectman's office this year. Um, you know, we had some new people coming in and, and trying to figure out how everything worked. Um, and it was a real collaborative effort. I think everybody did, you know, a really nice job. And, um, I do appreciate, um, the fact that, you know, this has been a little bit of an issue, um, this year because, um, we have a, a, a more fully functional, more full-time operational, I guess is a better way to put it, um, health department. And they've kind of become a partner, you know, in some of these inspections and everything and that. And we've figured out a couple of kinks and everything and a way to integrate them into the process moving forward. So really appreciate, um, the things that, um, Dr. Alker, as well as, uh, Diane, the food inspector, um, that we're getting through the regional grant has brought to this and that, just, just tremendous value. Uh, and so, uh, again, you know, I'm the one sitting here who usually, you know, um, you know, gets these approved. But I do want you to know that I'm just the face and there's a lot of, a lot of good people behind the scenes that are really making this stuff happen. So I just wanted to acknowledge them.
Thank you. Chelsea, do you want to just take one second and do you want to add anything about the Board of Health from the inspections?
Yes. So, um, the health department, including, um, Diane from Northborough, as Mark mentioned, um, have been working very diligently to get all our restaurants educated and then, um, doing a full um, inspection to make sure everything, um, ticks in tie. So I can't thank Dr. Alker and, um, Diane enough for getting us, um, to where we should be. Um, and, um, I look forward to continuing to, to do that on an annual basis with them.
Great. Thank you, Sam. Go ahead.
Question. Yeah, last time we talked about this, there was a question about, uh, are all of the food establishments now inspected and passed the inspections? And I'm assuming that's the case at this point.
So I believe that there's one that, um, has not been, Sam, um, but there is not a whole, there's, there is no reason to hold up the common license for that.
Okay.
There's no, there's no, there's no known issues. Um, there's just, I believe that there's one outstanding.
Okay, just so we don't vote for something that, uh, has a problem to start with. So I'm assuming that, uh, the inspector is on top of that one and we'll sort that out. Okay.
Great. Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, just to clarify, uh, Ms. Malanowski's comments, I think that, um, you know, a good way to put it is that any issues that have been identified, the businesses are actively working with the Board of Health and with the health staff to ensure that they get corrected. So there's no reason not to reappoint them, not to, I'm sorry, not to renew the license. And obviously if at some point in the future, you know, they decide not to be working with the Board of Health, then we can address the issue. But I think that everybody is working to get where the Board of Health is, is requiring them to be. So that's a good sign.
All right. Thank you. I just have one correction for you, Mr. Purple. Ms. Hale was also getting a salad. So before we say it was just a soda, let's put the healthier tip back on it as well.
Not aware of the salad. I was only aware of the drink. I can neither confirm nor deny there was anything green involved.
There was green involved. I can confirm that. So just, you know, just to make sure that we're clear that this wasn't just a junk food run. So, um, that being said, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve of calendar twenty twenty-two licenses? Um, minus the Wendy's company on Turnpike Road.
So move.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Uh, roll call, Ms. Melonowski.
Hi.
Mr. Haley.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio. Thank you, Anne. Ms. Ms. Brascio, I, thank you very much. Uh, next up, um, draft charge for Saint Mark's Street Park Working Group. Andrew, do you want me to turn this one over to you to start?
Um, yes. So you should see in the packet a, a version two of this document. Um, I know Sam likes, uh, the red line version. So I was, I was doing a red line version and then, you know, when you click, uh, like stop tracking changes and then you forget to, you keep making changes and you forget to press the button back. So I'm just going to give a oral red line, which is the changes are. Um, seven at-large members, not dependent on anyone being a member of every, any committee. Working group elects its own chair, vice chair and secretary. In the fourth paragraph, there's a slight revision to reflect a comment from Jim Hagerty. Says all records of the working group shall be filed with the select board. And all agendas, minutes and records of appointments shall be filed with the town clerk. That's because Jim said that a BOs appointed committee really um, files its records with the select board other than documents that should be with the town clerk. And the final paragraph includes Sam, Sam's suggested comment about um, s- soliciting and encouraging public comment at meetings. And in the last sentence, um, changed, working group shall deliver a recommendation to the select board to shall aim to deliver a recommendation to the select board. So that it's, um, provides a date, but is more, um, provides some leeway.
Great. Andrew, thank you and thank you for putting this together. We'll go around if there's any questions or comments. Mr. Stivers.
Looks fine to me. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Andrew, I'm sure it looks fine to you as well. We'll go around. Ms. Melonowski.
Looks good. Thank you.
Mr. Haley.
Good here. Andrew, you're way too young to be befuddled by track changes though.
Mr. Purple. You're muted, Mark.
Sorry. I have one question based on the earlier discussion of the transition from Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Okay.
This has Select Board all the way through. Would you like to change it to Board of Selectmen? Okay.
Yes. Okay, wonderful. That being said, do we have a motion to accept the charge for the Saint Mark's Street Park Working Group as amended?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, Ms. Melonowski. Sorry, Chelsea, I didn't. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Haley.
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio, I. And again, Andrew, thank you very much for that. Next up is a continuation of the discussion. I'm sorry, Andrew, go ahead.
So just in terms of next steps, will, um, um, the townhouse be a- advertising this, advertising, um, interest? Okay.
So, yeah, so what I, what I will do is I'll finalize the document, just change, I think the only thing we changed out would be change, what I suggested with the Select Board to support a Selectman, um, put the approval date on it, file it with the clerk's office and then advertise for, uh, uh, interested parties. Hopefully we'll have, um, people that, um, uh, for you to interview, um, at your meeting on January fourth. Also put an item on there for you to make appointments. If you like who you've got, then you can, you can make appointments that evening and we can get going.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, draft policy for recording clerks. So this is something we had talked about at the last meeting. There were some questions. I'm going to bring Vanessa in on this. I know, uh, she had put a memo together and addressed some of the questions. Uh, she did a great job and I, I appreciated working with her on this. So Vanessa, if you want to go ahead and, and give an update.
Sure. So thank you very much. Um, so the memo, um, that is before you gives a bit of a summary of um, what boards and committees are paying a recording clerk and what that fee might be. You can see there is a little bit of differentiation between, um, some of the boards and committees. And that we also wanted to provide information for you on who is taking minutes for the other, the balance of the committees. Some of that is handled by a staff person, um, like the ZBA, for example, or the Board of Health, et cetera. Um, but much of it is covered by a board or a committee member. In most cases, it's been designated to one particular person. Um, I did make a notation where, um, it says various committee scribes if that duty is shared among other members of the committee. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, Vanessa, thank you. So, um, I will just share as, as we went through as well. I know there's a recommendation here which was similar that we, we had talked about prior. Um, as, as I looked through some of the boards and committees, I mean, some of them aren't meeting every month. So I tried to take an average, just, I know we had talked about what the dollar figure would be. And if we did an average based on what's in the second chart, um, of eight meetings a year at the hundred and fifty rate, it comes out to roughly twenty-four thousand dollars. So, um, that's just, again, some just general information to add. Vanessa, thank you for putting this together. We'll go around. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Dennington for any questions or comments.
Um, and this one, the twenty-four thousand dollar figure that you're referring to, that's to do minutes for um, whi- which boards again?
So in the second chart, that starts with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I just averaged, Andrew, because some of those, again, aren't meeting every month. Some are, some are meeting, you know, sometimes twice a month. It, it depends. So I just averaged an eight just to come up with a roundabout number of what could be. So I did it at, um, there's twenty committees here and eight comes out to the hundred and sixty. Times a hundred and fifty comes out to roughly twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. Those are, those are committees that don't have a recording secretary. Okay. Um, the, um, no, the memo is, is, is clear and, um, follows up on the discussion that we had previously. So I don't have any other comments or questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Melonowski.
So are you, are you looking for us to define in the first chart if those minute takers were in agreement should, should be budgeted for FY twenty-three? Or I guess, what do you, are, are you, what are you looking for?
So what we had talked about was putting a policy in place for minute takers. And obviously this would affect twenty-three going into twenty-three. And the question was asked, who currently has minute takers? And that's who's listed. If we, uh, my suggestion to the board was to have permitting boards, executive board being the Board of Selectmen and advisory, which would mean out of this list, um, EDC, Shopsey, Historical, uh, Master Plan's almost done anyway. And I really think they probably need to scribe to, to, to finish those, that, that a lot goes on at those meetings. So you'd be looking to basically take three out of what currently has a minute taker. Um, and then set the pay rate at the fifty dollars that we had talked about, which is more equitable, you know, for, for boards and committees that, that go over the three-hour period.
Okay, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Haley.
All good.
Mr. Stivers.
Um, thanks. I got a couple of questions, Lisa. So the twenty-four thousand dollar figure, um, is for the additional committees that we're talking about here. So what, what is the total cost for minute takers for both the first chart and the second chart roughly?
So I don't have that. I don't know that we pulled that together, Sam, because I mean, planning board meets twice, twice a month. Board of Selectmen meets twice a month, conservation, it depends on what's on.
That's, that's not a showstopper. I was just curious as to what the total number is. And, and just to be clear, um, so I understand this, are we talking about fifty dollars an hour of meeting time? That's the, that's the yardstick. So it's not fifty dollars an hour for an individual has to spend six hours on them, minutes for a meeting that lasted twenty minutes kind of thing. So.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Um, how.
Pretty fair.
Sorry, Sam, I didn't interrupt. How, how we kind of came at this was, so you figure on a three-hour meeting, you know, it's, it's obviously three hours to take notes and then, you know, at least, at least, you know, half of that time to be able to put something together. So we were trying to come up with, it's not really fifty if you're really looking at it. It's actually less than that, but it, it's just more equitable. So.
I, I think that's the right way to measure it in terms of meeting time. And so if you get someone who's fast, they can make a little more money if they're slow at it. Little less hourly rate, but that's a good yardstick, I think. So, so, um, I'm fine with it. And, uh, again, I think it's good to have it consistent across all committees here and we'll see how it works. If it's, if there's a problem, we're hip, we'll hear about it and we can address it. Thanks.
Okay. And, um, so what we'll do is, um, I'll work with Vanessa. We'll put the policy together and we'll have it on the agenda now that we know exactly what the, that the board is in agreement with this path. We'll put something together and we'll have it on the agenda on January fourth. Chelsea.
Um, can we, in the meantime, have someone reach out to the, um, committees that we're proposing? Um, we're eliminating the minute taker from the budget for FY twenty-three, just to let them know that we're discussing this. And, um, you know, this is forthcoming.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, great. Thank you, everybody. Much appreciated on that. Next up, um, funding for local match for EEA grant acceptance of grant award. Ms. Melonowski, this was you?
It was, and I'm going to ask Mr. Purple, um, to give an update first, please.
Sure. First one in the barrel. Okay. So this is, um, I think this is pretty straightforward. I had a, had a nice, uh, conversation with Rob Anderson, who's the Chair of EDC. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, I think that the, the, the local match is, is, uh, fairly easy to attain. Uh, there were three, um, there were three places that they were, that the application had looked at as sources, potential sources for the match. One was in-kind services from various departments. One was CPC funding and one was, um, the, uh, consulting funding um, from the EDC budget for the FY twenty-three budget. And I think that, um, in talking with, um, Mr. Anderson, um, you know, the, the, we both, uh, he agreed. I suggested he agreed, um, that, um, um, that the EDC coordinator, um, you know, should be managing this grant. And, and he agreed and that is going to, um, bump up the, um, the local match, the in-kind hours, uh, and dollars, uh, fairly quickly. Um, and, uh, I believe in his, uh, his response back to me, um, uh, with Marika being the key point contacting coordinator for the, for the grant, um, she's probably going to exceed the in-kind allocation um, from the various departments and the CPC all on her own, which will then lessen, you know, go above that, which probably then will lessen any reliance on the consulting money in the EDC budget. Um, so there is a definite path forward, um, you know, and, and given that wastewater has become a central theme for, um, for EDC, um, you know, whether it be in the downtown or be on Route nine. Um, you know, I think there's a clear path forward and I, I see no reason why, you know, why the board shouldn't, um, move forward with, um, with, um, you know, formally, formally accepting the grant and we can get that paperwork going.
All right, go ahead, Chelsea.
So, um, and I did have some correspondence, um, with. So, and I did have some correspondence with Ms. Reynolds after our discussion at our meeting last week, and I think she brought up a good point. And this relates into the policy that is on my lap to draft related to spending of grant monies and town monies. But it's to include the process for, for what should happen when we apply for a grant and making sure that, you know, that everything's kind of connected when we're doing budget reviews and making sure that we have the in-kind portion. So that, that was a good suggestion that came out of that correspondence. So I'll make sure that I include those points when I draft the policy. And I would just, I, I saw that a meeting posted for Friday morning, and I'll try to to jump onto that meeting just to make sure that kind of what we discussed here, they are on board with. If, if everybody wants me to.
Okay, great. I'm seeing a shake of heads here. So are there any other questions before we move to take a vote on this? Okay, wonderful. So do we have a motion to accept the EEA grant for analysis of wastewater for Route 9?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call. Ms. Melanowski.
Hi.
Mr. Haley.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio, I. Great, thank you very much. Last up is the draft warrant for March 26, 2022 Town Meeting. Mr. Purple.
Madam Chair, the, the, the warrant is scheduled to close on January 4th at your next meeting, and at that point, all known articles and placeholders need to be, need to be submitted at that time. I wanted the board at least to have a quick look at what you have in place right now. I'm not going to run through this, through this whole thing. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you may have about what is here. But after you get past the first seven, eight pages of the Moderator's Rules, and you get to the articles, it's, it's a lot of the annual articles with regards to accepting donations, authorizing borrowing, contracts in excess of three years, the budget items, both operating water and capital. You get into the CP, you get into the CPA, and so on and so forth. The last, the second to last page is really where I've listed all of the new articles that, the requests for placeholders that have been submitted. And I can just run through those very quickly. The first one is the, the payment of accrued leave, accrued leave time for retirees. This is something that we fund on an as-needed basis. The Treasurer's Office will take a look with Ms. Hale and, and try to see who is eligible to retire and try to calculate out what those, what those payments of accrued leave time would be. And then, you know, we come back to Town Meeting and, and seek that funding so that we have that in place. Oftentimes, employees are eligible to retire, and they love it so much, they decide to stay, and we continue to carry those funds, but we just need to make sure that they're there. CPA projects, not sure what those, what the totality of those will be. I'll have to work with, with CPC to see what they're bringing forward this year. Planning Board has requested a placeholder for a tree bylaw. I believe that they have been discussing that at their meeting, and I know that there is, you know, some discussion between what we're doing and what we should be doing and what we could be doing. And, and so I know that, that those conversations are ongoing. Establishing Trails Committee is a standing committee, which I know is something that's been brought to you by Ms. McKee. Rescinding the remaining unused borrowing authorization for the public safety facility. We have borrowing authorization we never used, and so we just need to simply rescind that so that it's no longer available for use. Capital project for Newton Street Water Pipe Replacement. This is a, is a capital project that I believe that the capital does support. However, it's going to be its own separate article because it's not simply going to be funded through the water, through water funds. There are already existing borrowings that have residuals in them that need to, that can be applied to offset the cost of this. And so that's a project. I actually saw an email come through today. I did not get a chance to read it from Bond Council to structure the whole article for us. So we'll have a draft of that for your meeting on the 4th. Selectman Dennington had suggested a, working on a bylaw to regulate the process for boards and committees authorized to promulgate their own rules and regulations as to how that actually happens. I don't know if that's something you wanted to speak to briefly now?
Sure. So you might remember that some point in this, in the summer, it might have been one of the few meetings we had that it was in person in the townhouse. I had suggested that we have a little administrative procedure bylaw for the town, for the boards that have the authority under their bylaws to create their own rules and regulations. And it was something very, very simple that would just say that in order for any town board or committee to promulgate rules and regulations, they have to hold a public meeting to consider the proposed rules, post a draft of them in advance of the meeting, provide a copy to either the Select Board or the Town Administrator so that the Town Council can review them and opine on whether they're valid. And that unless you follow those very simple steps, that the, the rules would not be valid. And this is just to prevent, just to make clear that this is the proper procedure for issuing rules and regulations so that a board can't issue rules that don't, that go beyond the scope of its authority under the, the bylaw. I'm thinking of something in mind, very, very simple, and I would have in mind working with Jay Tellerman to try to, and probably Jim Haggardita. This is something that could be as simple as, you know, just three paragraphs, two or three paragraphs.
Andrew, just one question on that. So Town Meeting years ago on rules and regulations, and I, I may be wrong. I think for the, for the ZBA, there, there was a process put in place. Is this going to be in line with that? Or would?
Okay, I remember that at the special town meeting about the ZBA rules and the quorum issue, there was a proposal that for the ZBA to promulgate rules and regulations, they need to be approved by the Town Meeting, right? And I'm pretty confident that failed.
Okay.
Okay.
I wasn't sure.
It was like 2016 or 2017, but, so I don't think that that's effective. And there are some, you know, some boards that, I mean, just have to work with Jay about like how the Planning Board issues subdivision rules and regulations. We're not really looking to get into the details, but just to make clear that there's public opportunity for public comment on changes to rules.
Great. Okay, Andrew, thank you. I just, I just, I couldn't remember exactly where we stood on Town Meeting on that, and I didn't want to make sure that there was an issue. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
So the, the next.
One second.
Oh, sorry, sorry. All right. Yeah, no, that's okay. Just for, just for context, I know we talked about it in the summer. If you, for the, for federal statutes and for federal agencies, there is the Federal Administrative Procedures Act. For state boards, committees, et cetera, there's a State Administrative Procedures Act. One of the things I think, Andrew, you discovered is that there's not a Municipal Administrative Procedures Act. And so thi- this basically would be trying to import the requirements that already exist at the federal level and the state level, and I'm assuming some other communities have it. It's not some, some unusual step that the town would be taking. It basically would be, would be importing the sort of requirements that already exist in other venues to the town level. Am I right about that?
Yes, except this would not be nearly as complicated.
No, okay.
Just a notice and opportunity to comment before of rules take effect. That's it.
Go ahead, Sam.
Andrew, would this apply to independently elected boards, like the Planning Board, for example, Board of Health? I'm not sure we could do that.
I have thought of that.
Or School Board, actually.
I don't know if we can do that, and that's one thing that I would ask Jay about, but it seems.
Who's we? I, I, Town Meeting can do it.
Town Meeting could do it.
Right, and that's what this is intended to do.
Okay, I see the point that you're making.
I think, but.
I mean, the beginning point is to just, for tonight's purposes, it's there is a placeholder, and it sounds like there's enough agreement to keep it as a placeholder. And then the next step is looking at a draft to think about these questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Purple.
Uh, next is an article that the school has brought forward before for Capital Stabilization Fund for the regional school. Northborough passed this two years ago, but obviously, nothing can happen until Southborough passes it, so that's something for us to consider. Next, funding mitigation funds for sidewalks from Legacy Farms and Ston Brook Village. This was mitigation money that was received for these two projects, but mitigation money has to be received and then closed out at the end of the fiscal year, becomes free cash. And if we don't repurpose it, it's just going to sit there, and unfortunately, somebody would forget about it. So the, the, the thought process is that that funding should be put into an article and identified as such and for the purpose, and then becomes a funding source. Should a sidewalk project come up, that could offset the, that could offset the cost of the project. So at this point, there is nothing that is being applied to. It is simply just making the funds now available for the purpose they were given to us for. Article to accept the new collective bargaining agreements and fund first-year contracts, first year of contracts for any agreements that are ready for Town Meeting. To see if the town transfers some of the money out of the water retained earnings for use in the FY '22 water budget. This pandemic is wreaking havoc on our, on our usage, and it's making it very unstable, and we may need to use some reserves in order to try to, to balance out the FY '22 water budget, and then maybe to try to help us with '23, depending on how things go. There was a request from CHOPSY to, for an article to release the CPC funds previously voted by Town Meeting for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee purposes, and allow them to be expended without further authorization. And this is something that I know that this, the, the CHOPSY Chair has been speaking with Town Council about, so we'll, we'll take his guidance on that. Easements for St. Mark's Park, Street Park and Roadway, which would replace the reciprocal license that is already in place. Capital Planning Committee as a, as a standing committee for, as a bylaw. And then finally, noticing how often they're meeting, I think it's a real possibility that we will have a noise, a noise bylaw for consideration for the spring meeting as well. So that's the totality of what I've got now. If there's something that you want to add, please feel free to send it to me, and I'll put it on. Again, things that close on the warrant as a placeholder don't necessarily grow up to become articles. But, you know, there's a, there's a chance that, that they will. So that's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Melanowski, did you have something?
Yes, I was going to say noise. And then my second question is, should we consider adding an article to put in for a fall town meeting on an annual basis? And the reason why I'm asking is, I think the conversation that we're going to have at Advisory, I think there's maybe some conversation that we'll have about when we'll know what the actual split is between residential and commercial, and is there a value to, you know, being able to shift funds around as needed if we see a swing in the future like we just did? And in looking at the Town Clerk's Budget, it doesn't look like there's anything allocated right now for a fall town meeting. And so if we think we may have an intention of having a fall town meeting, I think we need to look at potentially adding something to that budget.
Thank you. Actually, I certainly am in favor of a, of a fall town meeting, and I, I'll tell you, I think it's, it would make Town Meeting more attractive to a lot of families as well. It's, it's tough for families with kids and, and otherwise. It's, it's a long day on a Saturday, and if we could split it up between the two, lots of towns do it, and they do it successfully. So I'm certainly in support. Any other thoughts, Mr. Haley?
Andrew, it's worth having a conversation.
Yep. Mr. Dennington?
I also think it's a good idea for a placeholder. I mean, I'm inclined to support it, but need to think about it a little bit further.
Agreed. Mr. Stivers.
Same feeling. Good to have it in there, and we can always change it if we don't need it.
Okay. Mr. Purple, will you add that, please?
I, I will do that. I will say the one thing, I think the one benefit to having a fall meeting is that you can determine when certain, when you want to take up certain issues that, you know, if you're going to take up capital in the fall, when you want to, you know, when is the preferred time to take up zoning articles, you know, that type of thing. So you really can structure your year based on, you know, what, what type of issues you, you tend to handle at what meeting, so.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else?
I, I have just a question about Article 26, and Mark, you were just explaining this, but you, so Legacy Farms, but Legacy Farms is in Hopkinton, right?
Yes.
So, but the town got money for Legacy Farms?
Thirty-five thousand.
Oh, okay.
Yep. It was, I believe it was a traffic mitigation, Andrew.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Insufficient, but welcome.
Absolutely. And, and I, I will say on the Stony Brook that when, when that was specifically earmarked in the Planning Board decision, that in lieu, you know, that this, this donation would be made, or the sidewalks could be replicated, so.
Can I just ask a general timing question for Mr. Purple? So all the placeholders have to be in by January 4th. And then we close the warrant then? And so are we confident that people are well aware of that?
Yeah, I think we've sent out, you know, I've sent out multiple notices and sent out notices to all boards and committees, all departments, that we extended it because it was going to be closed on the 21st, but then we played around with our schedule this month and just decided to extend it to the 4th. So can send out another reminder just to make sure. I think we've got a good, we've got a good grouping here. I think the things that we've gotten back, you know, shows that, that, that people have gotten it. I can send something out one more time, maybe the end of this week, beginning of next, just to remind people that, that it is coming out.
And to Ms. Brascio's point last week on the timing of Town Meeting, do we want, I, I know there's probably a lot more conversations to be had. And, and maybe this isn't, maybe this is too soon to add an article, but to revisit when the timing of annual Town Meeting. At least, I don't know if that's something that you think we're going to be prepared for, or we probably need to wait until maybe the fall to do that.
So I haven't had the opportunity to sit with Ms. LeVault yet. We've been texting back and forth. We're trying to set up a time to be able to do this. I mean, we could certainly put something in and just pull it if we need to, or hopefully, I'll have more information if we put something in now by the 4th when we close it. If, if I don't think it's going to be possible, or, you know, we're really far apart, then we could certainly pull it and potentially look at it for a fall, if there's a fall. So, Mark, would you put that in just as a placeholder?
I could also, I could add it into the placeholder in terms of codifying a fall town meeting and just add it in there, and that gives you that latitude.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Chelsea.
You're welcome.
Okay, nothing else I see? All right. At that point, that brings us to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to comment, please raise your hand. All right. I see no one. And that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move. To adjourn for 20 minutes.
For 20 minutes, exactly. So I was going to say, I'll see you all at 7:30. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Melanowski.
Hi.
Mr. Haley.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio, I. Great. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you at 7:30.
Thank you.